I'm calling the board, they're opening the whole meeting for August 14th. I need to let you know that we have an executive session at 6:30 this evening for the purpose of discussing personnel. All calls, please, later. Mrs. Elder. Here. Mr. Mazzur. Mrs. Cozart. Here. Dr. Loughlin. Here. Dr. Loughlin.
Sure.
Mr. Muthick.
Here.
Mr. Palmer. Dr. Zorich.
Starting.
Mrs. Maynes. Here. Thank you. Typically, we don't have hearing of visitors at the committee in the whole meeting, but we are voting on several resolutions this evening that pretty much involve hiring of staff. So if you wish to comment at this point, you would be commenting on any of the resolutions we have there for hiring of staff. If you wish to comment on anything else, that would be at the next week's meeting, would be the hearing of visitors for that. So do I get anyone who wish to comment on any of the resolutions on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none. Solicitors report, Mr. Maynes.
No report.
Thank you. Legislative report, Dr. Loughlin.
No report.
Thank you, Dr. Loughlin. Education and planning, item number one in your packet is the enrollment report for the upcoming school year. Just separate any comments?
Yes, also attached are the updated class sizes as of as late as this morning. If you look at the class sizes and you look at the totals, I just want to state that the total number may not totally coincide with the number on the actual enrollment report that is on the grade sheet. Due to some of the students at Bagley being in the autistic support classroom, so it would show them on enrollment report, but would not show them then in the classrooms. Also, there may be a student who called to register but did not come in to get assigned to a home room, but we have them in the system, okay? So again, these are the numbers and the latest numbers at La Trobe Elementary School, just to remind her, we have Mrs. Plinensek and Mrs. Temerowicz, class with 17 students attend. And again, that number throughout the grade level, reflection way when you compare the grade levels.
No problems at this time?
No, we're looking at and we're keeping a very close look at, as you can see, the upper grade levels that have the 26ers, 27 classrooms, whether it's the fifth grade at ELS, we have the fourth grade at Bagley, and the sixth and fourth grade at Mountain View. And we're watching that on a daily basis. As of now, we're all.
Mrs. Cozart?
That was my question. That number, that number is pushing a little population around from some of the elementary. I got a lot of, I'm ready to see questions, see, I'm having trouble.
That's fine. But we are watching that.
We are watching it, and we've gone back and forth if you move staff and you're going to have in larger numbers in lower grades versus in higher grades. And after speaking, collaborating with the elementary principals, we were all in consensus that this is the best case scenario for what we have right now.
Thank you. You're welcome. On the agenda for next week, we will be asked to approve a rotary exchange student, Felix Laurent, from Belgium. And those families listed, so that will be on your agenda for next week, I apologize if I butchered the name. Also on your agenda for next week, we talked about the E-Cab Academy Memorandum of Understanding for the 2012-2013 school year, so please read that and be ready to vote on that for next year. That's item number three in your packet. We have with us this evening, Mrs. Kara Stanger, and she's going to do a presentation for us about the Autistic Sensory Agreement Act in the elementary. Welcome.
Thank you.
Dr. Cronin.
I have some handouts for Kara. Kara's here to talk to you tonight about sensory room that she and the staff have worked very hard in preparing for. And I must say that her work, and she'll talk about it, has been exceptional since we brought the autistic support classroom into Bagley Elementary School. Transforming a classroom and a group of kids in a very special way. And Kara saw a need that she's going to talk about tonight, and what's, I find to be most impressive, is Kara didn't turn around and put her hand up back to us. She went out and made some things happen with her colleagues, and she'll talk a little bit about that, so welcome.
As Dr. Cronin said, my name is Kara Stanger, I've been with the district, this is my seventh, this will be my seventh year. I taught learning support at Bagley Elementary School for five, or excuse me, four years, and then transferred over to the autistic support classroom, and we received it from the IU. What kind of started my whole thought process on sensory rooms? Last year, a number was released by the head of autism speaks. And right now, in the world, in the United States, excuse me, one in every 88 children are diagnosed with autism. And they're officially calling this an autism epidemic. So that statistic was all actually derived from, I believe, the year 2009. So you can even guess that that number's probably a little lower now. So I wanted to talk to you real quick about what Greater La Trobe looks like. If one in 88 is our national number, where are we at Greater La Trobe School District? I chose to look at elementary students with autism because that's where I'm teaching. So at Bagley Elementary School, we have 13 students with autism. Now, in my classroom, I teach in an autistic support classroom, I did not include students who were from out of district. So these are students that are Bagley Elementary School students. That transfers to one in 50 students at Bagley Elementary School with an autism diagnosis. At La Trobe Elementary School, we have 15 students with autism, which transfers to one in 53 students. And at Mountain View Elementary School, we have 12 students, or one in 57 students. We also have six students currently that are out of district, placed out of district. So you can just guess, if we would transfer two of those students kind of back in, how much our numbers would even jump up. So right now, Greater La Trobe is actually above the national average. Looking at these other schools, I got a chance to visit some of the private schools in our area, and looking at our school, I kind of thought, what do they have that we don't have? And our goal is to always keep our students in district. We want to keep them with their siblings, with their friends, with their neighborhood peers, because those are the people they're going to form social relationships with. So in order to keep them in district, I really saw a need for more sensory integration. So students with autism, what kind of makes them special is they need routine, they need repetition. And 100% of students with autism have some sort of sensory processing disorder. So they have a problem interacting with their environment. So a way to deal with that was to create a multi-sensory environment in our school. What you see in front of you is a plan for our multi-sensory environment, that would be at Bagley Elementary School. This is a plan that was given to us by the Hidden Angel Foundation. And when I started looking at these things, I thought about one little bubble tube, and I thought, well, a bubble tube costs $1,600. And I thought, well, maybe I could do a bubble tube. Well, I'm kind of a go big or go home kind of person, so I went from bubble tube to about a $28,000 room. And I knew that I wasn't going to get $28,000. So we did a lot of fundraising, Bagley Elementary School students raised over $3,000 themselves. So we did a lot of fundraising.
I don't feel that I would say themselves, I would say Kara led that process.
Well, I have to say, the student government, the sixth grade student government on their own surprised me and came up with a project once, one month. So it really became contagious. We sold bracelets that I believe you got last year, and we had kids with them lined up their arms, so it was really neat. But what you have in front of you is a layout of this classroom. I was given, I applied for many grants and received two very large grants, along with many other grants that also help. Though I received a grant from McFeely Rogers Foundation, and I received a grant from the Hidden Angel Foundation. What was really neat about this Hidden Angel Foundation grant, aside from the fact that they called me out of the blue, is that not only did they provide us with monetary funds, but they did all the planning for us. They ordered everything for us, and most importantly, they are sending the leading occupational therapists from the United States to our school district to train our staff to use this multi-sensory environment. So we have future plans, this is all right here, you see that the Hidden Angel Foundation paid for 50% of this room. The Feely Rogers Foundation really made up for the other 50% of the room. And in the future, we're going to continue, because right now, we have this multi-sensory environment at Bagley. But I recognize that there are students at Mountain View and students at La Trobe Elementary School that also have autism. So our plan is to continue this fundraising campaign so that those students can have kind of satellite sensory areas. I'm going to cut it off there. If you are interested in hearing more about the sensory room, or even want to hear more about the benefits and how it can help students with autism, I will be happy to stay after the meeting and answer any questions for you. So thank you very much.
Thank you for all the work on that, Mrs. Stanger.
Thanks.
Very impressive.
Thank you.
I have a question about, are these kids that are still in class, in the regular classroom, or are they all in the separate?
Well, the sensory room, and I was Dr. Solis.
Do you say you have, how many kids at Bagley with autism?
She has seven children in her class right now, and many of the children with autism are in the general education setting. They're supported with special education teachers or personal care assistants because their academic skills are such that they should be in the general ed setting.
We also have several students with visual impairments coming to Bagley, and those students, we've found through research, also benefit from sensory environments.
Are the new programs you started for the junior high?
The new program's at the junior high school, and we are starting to collect some materials for sensory. If you come, you'll see, like, some of the, some of the things are like trampolines, because kids need input, sensory input through their body. Some are visual with lights, some are sound. So it's different kinds of input that help children. And it's through Kara's observations, she worked with a child who just would sing and talk and yell and scream. She puts a pair of headphones on her ears and it changed everything. So I mean, with the work that she has done to learn what helps children, what's the problem, we've come to realize this has really made a difference. It's about a diet of sensory input. Each child would have a diet that they would eat, and you take snacks, you have sensory snacks throughout the day.
Dr. George, the room that she's talking about would only be used by the students in her autistic support classroom, but it would also be utilized by those other students that Dr. Solis was referencing, who are out in the general ed environment, that might need a little diet. It's nice to hear you, it's nice to hear you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Janice. Also on your agenda for next week will be a resolution to approve a letter of service agreement with NHS Human Services of Pennsylvania for providing autistic support during the 2012-2013 school year. Do we have anyone who should comment?
No.
Good. All right, and also on your agenda for next week would be a resolution to approve a returning senior high school tuition student that we want to marry to next school. Anything else to come up under education and planning? Oh, we'll move to finance, but Mrs. Elder.
Thank you. On your agenda next week will be the treasurer's report of payment of bills, the budgetary transfers from the end of the 11-12 school year, that's in your packet, number four. And then the next item is to approve the Delta T group of Western Pennsylvania. And I'm going to ask Dr. Tepper to speak about that, if he will.
Absolutely. There are times when we struggle to get substitute nurses when our nurses are out. Even with extensive advertising and trying to get licensed practical nurses in and working with substitutes to replace our nurses when they're out. After contacting several school districts on how they deal with the situation, I was referred to the group Delta T. Basically, we can contract for substitute nurses on an ask needed basis. There is our minimum days. If you have to call down one time during the school year to have substitute nurse sent out, that is fine. It's a year-to-year agreement. We just want to make certain that we do not have a school that is uncovered with a nurse. And obviously, the first thing we look for is our health assistant. If our health assistant can be transferred to the building where there's a vacancy, that's great. And if we have multiple absences, we would, we now have a backup plan. After calling our subs, and if we are unable to have a sub that is on our sub list who is emergency certified. So we would use our emergency certified substitutes first and try to contact them for the vacancy. And if we are in a pinch, we do now at least have an agency we can contact.
I have a question. Is there still a problem with the change that's been made in the way we're covering school nurses? I mean, I thought to stay changed the way requirements, we wouldn't have this kind of problem.
Actually, we still have the same number of nurses in the district.
I know we do, but you don't have to have one certified school nurse to charge it, correct?
Correct.
So any school, any nurse can cover a school nurse. You don't have to be certified as a school nurse.
Correct. And our substitutes are not certified school nurses, they are not all certified school nurses, many of them are registered nurses.
We still have a problem getting a substitute nurse?
Yeah, many times we do, many times we do. Some of our substitute nurses actually work in the doctor's office, and they may only be available one or two days out of the week to substitute. There are times where we struggle getting a substitute nurse. I can say we only had one day this year where we were really tight on coverage, but it made me uncomfortable and to have a backup plan to make certain that we're not in that situation again.
That surprises me, because I can understand you have to be certified as a school nurse to fit the problem. I would think there's a lot of near retirement age or just retired nurses.
I would think, and I thought too. You're right, I did not think it would be an issue, and we actually just put an advertisement in the Tribune Review, only advertising for other physicians for substitute registered nurses or licensed practical nurses, and it's on our website, but we just had an added Tribune Review as well. You'd be surprised, sometimes we will have substitutes that work, swing shift the hospital, and there are only certain days that they'll sub.
Are there any other questions?
Thanks. The next item is second, the grants. And each of these grants is directed towards the multi-sensory room, and you can look at them. There's quite a lot of material on the Hidden Angel Foundation that we're members to look at, that's all in your packet. And the finance committee did not meet this month. We decided to wait until more of the year-end information was available, and we're going to meet on Wednesday, September 5th, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Property and supply, Mrs. Cozart.
Thank you. Project update from the next authority.
Evening, everyone. To give you an update of the project, this month has been spent continuing to prepare the contract documents and submitting all of the applications that are required for the different governmental bodies to get this project up and running. And we have pretty much all of them submitted, with the exception of the building permit. The problem with the building permit application is you need 100% complete drawings to submit that application, so it usually is the very last thing we do on the floor, just because of the way the process works. The MPDS stormwater management and erosion containment control plans have all been submitted to West Foreland County. They do their review there. This project does not have to go to the state, it goes, it goes to the EP to get the MPDS permit, but it's reviewed and approved by West Foreland County, so that reduces the timeline for that, so we see no issues there. We have submitted the work order with Penn Power to have that utility line relocated, relocated. I had a nice long conversation with an engineer there today, and he assured me that he would help the process on as much as possible. Because that process is the one that could take anywhere from a month or two to a very long time. He understands it's a project for public school, it also powered, it also is the power supply for the public school, so he's willing to work with us on that one. So I felt better after that. We've contacted the community township stewardry, and that's been approved where there was an issue, there was a concern with TAP, available TAPs and those sort of things. Public schools are exempt from a TAP restriction, so if additional TAPs are required, they will be made available to the school district. The process now is that what was agreed upon, they won't even look at that until after the project is up and occupied for a year. They've got the monitors used to judge it that year. That way, instead of trying to calculate how much we really increased, they know how much, if any, increased there was, and the TAPs will be allocated at that point. So it's extremely fair way to do it. We will be going in front of the planning commission at community township for preliminary final approval in September. Hopefully, that goes well, as I told you earlier, she wrote a paper we went through and advised me this month, and that's good from the one that is, they'd be looking forward. There is, at the last, I believe at last month's meeting, there was a request for a more detailed schedule of the different governmental approvals, and that's how that's sort of shaping out. I've attached that, I'm not going to go over the details, if you have any questions, we can have a debate. As of now, we're still tracking to stay on schedule the way we were. Nothing jumps out at me as being an issue to knock us off the schedule, but it's still a matter of getting approvals on. Under required for action, there's really no required for action for this project this month. I did list something there, but it was, some of it was brought up at last month's meeting, but it doesn't relate to this project. Are there any questions?
Are you doing this next, or are you just?
Okay. As you're all aware, as was discussed last month, the state has, in their new budget, has put a moratorium on new plan con application projects. The deadline for submitting projects to avoid the moratorium is October 1st of this year. And with that being said, the discussion went along the lines of if there are any future projects that you think you may want to do, now would be the time to submit a part of an application to the state to get your foot in the door, get on the record as a project went on. There's no timeline for, once you're in, the door, it doesn't, there is no clock that starts, that says you have to complete a project in a certain amount of time. So even if it was something that you were looking at for a couple of years down the road, it might be prudent to do that now.
And that was in the agenda.
And also for information, there was an article in today's, I think it was, my bulletin about this. It was the date of our West Foreland from the School Boards Association, and that would be a good thing for us to have read to the public, the state as well.
I have a question, sure. You referenced the meeting with the planning commission, your comments about questioning the status of the state and stuff. Do you have the ability to put a stop to this thing, or what's the deal?
No, the planning commission does not have the ability to dictate to entities going in front of them size and design, those types of things. What they, what they're looking for is to make sure that the projects in front of them meet their ordinance. So that's where, that's their, that's their purpose, to make sure that a project meets the ordinance that they've adopted. As long as it meets that ordinance, then it's, they will approve it.
Does it?
What, what they're concerned with for the size of the bleachers was they don't have an ordinance that limits the size of a bleacher in the township. What they do have is an ordinance that tells you how many off-street parking spaces you need for each seat in the assembly space. And depending on how that is interpreted, you would need one off-street spot for every two seats in the bleachers or every three seats in the bleachers, depending on how it's interpreted, to simplify that, if it got involved. But if, so what we have planned is to go in front of the zoning hearing board. And what the zoning hearing board will do is grant a variance if it's decided that we're required to have one parking spot for every two seats in the bleachers. Because that would require 1,000, if it's a 2,000-seat bleacher, it would require 1,000 off-street parking spaces. It's very difficult, if not impossible, to find enough level ground left to find this campus to fit the additional parking spaces to get up to.
How many are there now?
About 660. And if it's, if it's decided that it's one in three, now you're down to 666, 667, which is an easily doable number, and a variance without doing the part. Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Item number seven in your packet is the opening of work bids for our sports equipment, that would be an agenda item. We also will be discussing voting on the Bagley Elementary School loading drop here. We'll be discussing the parking lot of Central Elementary, which, you also want to pull over?
I'm getting more pricing, so I tried to work with the city and then, and so I got prices so we could talk about that, probably in supply. In the conversation, we decided I would look for some more pricing, so currently getting more pricing. more pricing.
We also have an issue about these signs at the stadium, that they're paid.
They're paid.
They're paid instead of warrants, so we're, and that's not really the color we want. So we're looking, we're looking at that.
That's moving forward. It'll be done for the first of all.
Right. Minutes tomorrow meeting are item number eight, and our next property supply will be September 6th. Thursday, April 7th.
Thank you, Mrs. Cozar. Student activities and recreation, Dr. Lachlan. Want to just tell us a little bit about the school?
And to give you a general update, it was a great success, and obviously, there's literally 100 people to thank, because there was a ton of help there and there was a ton of people. We don't know where they all came from, but they all showed up. And so the district may out very well. There'll be a lot of programs we can help for the kids. But to give an example of how the whole, this is the first time the district did the whole thing, from concession stands, the tickets, to the whole ball of wax. But to give an example of how everybody helped, and we said we were going to do this together, just roughly counting up, we had 32 coaches and employees from the school district there, representing at least 17 programs, different programs in the school district, 13 administrators, and at least 50 more volunteers in the community. So there was almost 95 of 100 with nice orange shirts all over the stadium, so you could see them very well. But I want to thank the administrative team that helped me. I mean, it was a big pass to take the whole thing over. It went well. We were fortunate. Had one quick little rain shire around 5:30, and that cleared it up. And the night went off about a hitch, and I think the fans were into it. And that was a retirement of the four players at center of the field, and that really got the night off to a roaring start, and it just went from there. And I can't be thankful enough for everyone's help, because it started with me, 100 people, literally 100 people making it work, and it worked. So thanks to everybody in the community, and it was just a great night.
Thank you, Dr. Lachlan. Community relations, Dr. Zorch.
Community relations.
Hope for better news next week. I've got a few more since we kind of, we're kind of running out. West Bonning intermediate unit, did you get minutes from last? Probably not the next one, next week. Okay, yeah. And you were mailed, or you had access to the other minutes that were not included in that. EWC, PC, Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Cozar. Thank you. Order policy, PSBA liaison, Mrs. Elder.
Yes, I'm waiting to hear from all of you who want to attend PSBA to be a delegate to the legislature and council, and I'm anticipating all those calls. Good question. Connie, does everybody have a copy in their packet of these two policies?
No, because there were only two words.
Yeah, okay.
That's why I put them in there.
These two policies were enacted in May, and we have decided to change, actually there are three words. In the first, which is number 211, the way it reads now is, "The board shall require parents and guardians who have students who participate in their scholastic sports programs, et cetera, et cetera, to purchase the student accident insurance." And we're changing that to, "The board will provide those parents and guardians the opportunity to purchase," rather than requiring that they purchase it. The opportunity will be given to them, and they can act on that opportunity. So that's the first question. These have to be done before school starts, obviously, because they get that in the packet. The other, the next change is a simple change, and it's to policy number 217, which regards graduation requirements. And the student read, the current language is, "The board shall permit a student with a disability who has attended four years of high school to participate in commencement ceremonies with his or her graduating class." And the change is changing the word "shall," the board shall permit, to the board may permit. And I think the difference is that the student or and/or their guardian has to request it, rather than the way it is simply that it's going to happen whether they want it to or not. So those are the two changes, and they will be on the agenda next week, and they're very simple, and they should be done before school starts. And then the rest of the whole series of policies that PSBA has made very small changes in that I talked to you about last month.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Transportation, Dr. Motta.
In your packet, item nine is the list of all the certified van and school bus drivers that will be on the next meeting. Also, we'll be voting on security police for all the coming school year. Minutes of the last transportation meeting, and then there also on the item 10, and just remind you that we're going to be submitting an RFP in a week to secure some numbers for future transportation contracts, so that'll be in the paper, so be aware in case someone asks you. And then our next transportation meeting is a correction, will be September the 5th at 3:00 p.m. in the Senior High School. Got a question?
I'm assuming if they're on here, all these drivers are on here for approval, if they, all their clearances have been received.
Yes, all the clearances have been received, and we're prepared to approve them.
Yes. Thank you very much. Mr. Palmer is not here this evening. The only item under his agenda is the next Technology Committee meeting will be held September 11 at 6:00 p.m. in the Center for Student Creativity. Anything else? Superintendent's recommendations, Mrs. Swiger.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 28, which is the reservations listed on the agenda.
So moved second. It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number 28. Any questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor of adopting that resolution, please say aye. Aye, if you want to pose, say nay. That passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 29, professional personnel appointments for Vanessa Flower for elementary and Matthew Major for junior high school social studies.
So moved. It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number 29, professional personnel appointments. Any questions or discussions? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 29, please say aye. Aye, if you want to pose. That also passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 30, which is the recall of two teachers, namely Tonya Barbino, Family Consumer Science, and Jamie Kelp, Business Education from Furlem.
So moved second. It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number 30. Any questions or discussions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, if anyone to pose, say nay. That passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 31, with professional personnel appointments, namely substitute teachers.
So moved. I'll second that. So it's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number 31, professional personnel appointments for substitute teachers. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, if anyone to pose. That also passes unanimously.
And last, I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 32, which is the support personnel appointments, and they're listed there, the personal care assistants and the classroom assistants, as well as the teaching assistant for the senior high school mathematics program.
So moved second. It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number 32. Questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, if anyone to pose, say nay. Mrs. Swiger, I would say that passed 601.
And I appreciate the board voting on those resolutions this evening. It really provides us a benefit, because our first day for staff is next Wednesday, August 22nd. In addition, next week, we will ask the board to move on resolutions to point some classified recommendations for personnel or coaches positions, as well as we would ask the board to inform the substitute rate for the 2012-2013 school district.
Here, excuse me. And other business? There will be, if you want to go ahead?
Sure, I can. The board retreat, we've had some dates out there floating around. We seem to be struggling with picking a date that we believe everyone will be able to attend. I will send out an email tomorrow with one or two dates and just let you know, yea or nay, the date we had spoken about seems not to be able to be wanted for everyone. And I know that's a difficult thing to do. Also listed are quite a few orientation dates, and actually, the friendship parties did badly. There are many different events that you're able to attend, but just note under Mountain View, those are their open house dates that are available for Mountain View. So if you're a parent or someone who might like to attend some of those events, please check them out. And also, if I could share, just briefly, probably some of you driven by Rotary Park, and you've seen the pavilion that is being built and actually is built. I was just there today, I knew Mills Level was there today. Rotary, Littrow Rotary has made a contractual donation of building a raised pavilion at Rotary Park for use by the school district and the community. Hopefully, I know it's not totally done, but it just about is. Ken, I don't know if you want to give an update. I know you met there this afternoon.
Today, they brought tables that they had purchased and were added to it. I mean, it's great for class, the ramp is done, it's great for students. I know there's a teacher, and it's very interesting, you didn't.
No.
No.
But it seats about 36 to 40 people, but please feel free to stop down. It really is a beautiful facility. These are just some pictures that Mr. Townsend from Rotary sent today, and I thought I'd print them off for you to look at. But if you have an opportunity, just drive in, and you can actually see it from your vehicle. You don't actually have to get out if you don't want to. But it really is a nice, a nice facility for use. And I'm sure there'll be some type of formal dedication at some point, but since it is done, and when we drive by, you'll see that I probably should make a generous donation to help me.
Thank you. Any other business?
Yeah, I did, I forgot to mention this when Hank was talking, but look at that permitting schedule, the first energy of West Penn Power thing is a complete piece of development project. I was contacted by them, and they made you have renewing your energy provider. So I did call them, and I told them that my renewal would be predicated on speed with the same power line at the high school project. And of course, I didn't know what I was talking about, and I said, well, you probably will in the near future, but take that in your security, that there may be a lot of people that call, and will determine their energy provider based upon the expediency of moving the power line at the Rettro project. So in case any of you are contacting the person and you're asking about renewal, might not be a bad idea to say. I just put that on. You're welcome.
Any other business to come before the board this evening? No, I thank you for your time, and we are.